Good evening. Yeah, I love the energy out there. Yeah, indeed. Really good to hear all the noise out there and just the sense of passion and excitement tonight. So I'm so glad you're here. I just wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present, the board, the superintendent, and I were pleased that you've joined us and, you know, we're here to celebrate student achievement in some incredible ways. We're going to review a bunch of information tonight. We're going to make some policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Polk County School Board as well. So I'd like to call the January 28th, 2025 regular school board meeting to order. Now, if we could all stand at this point, Bishop Mincy is going to leave us, lead us in our invocation?
Kind Father in Jesus' name, we are thankful for the gift of this wonderful day. This is the day you have made. We will rejoice, we'll be glad in it. Thank you for the privilege of prayer today. We thank you for this board, its chairman, and all of the members that serve Polk County Public Schools. Thank you superintendent, deputy superintendent, and all of his staff. Thank you, God, for every school in this district, every administrator, every student that comes to our schools. God, we're here tonight and we are grateful to you for the many blessings that you have already given unto us, that you are with us, and we just ask that you would continue to bless Polk County Public Schools. Thank you for this meeting tonight, ask that you would let it be a fruitful meeting, oh God, and ask that the things that will be done will continue to bless our children as they go forward. Oh God, and I just ask that you would lead us and guide us and protect us, for many things are happening in this hour right now as we speak, but we know that you are in control of everything. We pray your blessings tonight, be in this meeting, and let everything we do bring glory, honor, and praise to your wonderful name. We ask these blessings today, in the name of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Mincy. We do have a guest, so if everybody could remain standing, and Isabel, if you can come forward and lead us in the pledge tonight?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Everybody can be seated except our guest tonight. Oh, yeah. Yeah, you get the spotlight. Indeed. So, you know, I mentioned that all the board members and the superintendent, we've all had a chance to see your bio, so we're excited. Typically, we start every meeting honoring students and hearing about the incredible things that are happening in your life. So, I don't know, introduce yourself, anybody that you have with you tonight as well?
So, my name is Isabel Fernandez. I go to Tennerock High School. I'm 16 and I'm a junior. Tonight I have my stepdad here that I brung with me, and I've always been a straight A student. I've always loved school. I've always been like active with sports, and I just like to stay busy, getting out there, and like growing myself and like building up myself as well. So this opportunity meant a lot for me.
Wow, that's awesome. I mean, you are so eloquent and just professional and pretty incredible. So, I mean, your GPA, are you tracking all that data? I mean...
Not really. I do watch my GPA, like I don't like getting below a 92 in my class, so my GPA does mean a lot to me. I try to hold it and maintain it at my 4.3, but hopefully it'll go up.
Indeed. So, some huge accomplishments. So, I know that you are a member of the 3DE School at Tennerock as well. You want to talk about that a little bit?
For the people that don't know what 3DE is, it's a, what do I say? It's a program that students can join and it gives them a chance to like connect with real-life companies and like provide solutions with them. So I've gained a lot of exposure and opportunities. I've worked with Polk County Sheriff's Office, Arby's, Delta, Truist, and I think if it wasn't for 3DE, I don't think I'd be recognized enough for my potential that I have with academics and be able to be here.
Wow, that's incredible. I mean, did you hear that? I mean, these are like national brands, and then obviously our Sheriff's Department, which is an incredible organization within our county, and you've had a chance to interact with these and pitch concepts and ideas. It's pretty amazing.
This year, actually, as a junior, we create our own business, and we have our market day coming up where we actually get to pitch it to other students, and we've already pitched it to like a council of judges, and so hopefully it goes good this year. I'm hoping that me and my team will actually like allow the business to grow beyond high school because it's a business that we made that connects with us as athletes, and so I think there's a lot of potential for it.
That's awesome. And, you know, just as a point of reference as well, we're expanding 3DE into Lake Region as well, so we have Tennerock and then Lake Region High School as well. So you mentioned athletics. Want to tell us a little bit about your athletic background?
So, I've played volleyball for three or four years now, and I ran track. This year is going to be my second year, and then I've also joined weightlifting this year, and I just, I just made it past districts and I have regionals Thursday as my first year, and it's honestly like the biggest, one of the biggest leaps that I took that I didn't think it was going to like take this much out of me and like actually I would enjoy it this much.
Wow, that's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You've got this drive, you know? I'm also seeing in your bio as well that you're pursuing some dual enrollment. You want to talk about that?
I take classes with SEU, and I've already earned three accredited hours, and I'm about to earn three more, and my professor told me that once I complete these two courses, I can get 100% guaranteed acceptance and $1,000 every year. That's tuition.
All right, very good. This is awesome news. Okay, so your dreams, I mean, what are your biggest dreams that you see in the future?
Definitely travel nursing. I love the idea of helping people and putting my faith also to help them to spread the word of the Lord and use that to help them as well. And I've also considered being an athletic trainer because connecting just with other students and helping them and like giving them like my background from where I came from and to like where I can be and where I will be, I think that's really important. I've also considered being a veterinarian because I take Vet currently, and next year I'm actually able to get my CVA, which stands for my Certified Veterinary Assistance License, and so that's also a goal for me. And honestly, I've also considered the military because I've joined Raiders as a part of JRTC, and so I'm thinking about the Air Force possibly, but we don't know.
Wow. So I'm hearing like academy work, like the Vet Academy, I mean dual enrollment, 3DE, I mean all kinds of JRTC.
I've gotten two certifications with Vet. I got access systems and ag associates, and this year I'm taking animal science.
That's amazing. Well done, well done. So, favorite thing that you can say about Tennerock High School?
3DE, officially 3DE and like the sports community probably, and FCA, I got to give it to FCA. And honestly, Tennerock has grown to be a better community. I feel like my freshman year, I was like, I don't want to be here. I almost transferred to Arvendale until my sophomore year where I really connected with more sports and I connected more with 3DE, and that's when I really put myself out there and I grew a family at Tennerock.
That's amazing. Now, if you need any stories on your principal, you know, her and I go all the way back to like third grade at James E. Stevens in Bartow. So, principal is amazing, which is pretty cool. So we're so happy and thrilled to hear about your journey. Your academic excellence is incredible. I mean, you are so professional. So thanks for being here tonight. We would love for you to come out front here. We do have a photographer, and if you want to have you and your guests that you have with you tonight, it'd be awesome to get a picture to celebrate you. If we can all give her a round of applause tonight.
Speaker. Ms. Miller.
Oh, so Ms. Miller would like to share a couple words. Ms. Miller, you're recognized.
Hi Isabel, thanks for coming. I want everyone to know that I got to judge one of the competitions with 3DE, and you were so impressive and your team, and I hope all the board members get a chance to do that, and even if you're in the community and you really want to see some kids that will inspire you, that the future is great for us. 3DE has the opportunity for you to judge their presentations, and you will be so overwhelmed by these kids. I really enjoyed it, so thank you. I hope to see you at this year's. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Indeed. I mean, we could actually just close the meeting out and be done tonight. I mean, this, no, we still have a lot of work to do. Great, great opportunity to hear from Isabel. So, board members, the first item on our agenda tonight is to accept our agenda. Superintendent Hyde, are there any revisions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, yes, there are several revisions this evening. Item B, as in boy, number one, new administrators and attachment was added. Item E, number three, approve the minutes of the January 14th, 2025 board meeting hearing minutes for Matthew Lassiter, item was added. Item G, number one through six, board member travel was updated. Item H, number three, lantern specialty care, formerly known as surgery plus optional elective surgery benefit contract, January 1st, 2025, was moved to the action agenda item. Item H4, quantum health, healthcare navigation, coordination, and medical management was also moved to an action agenda item. Item J, number one, staff and district updates, the attachment was updated. Item L, number one, non-instructional personnel actions, an attachment was added. Item L, number two, administrative and instructional personnel actions, an attachment was added. And item S, number six, Pointe Sienna area high school options, an item was added. That concludes any changes to the board meeting this evening, sir.
All right, thank you, superintendent. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the agenda for January 28th, 2025 with those noted revisions. All right, so we've got a motion from Mr. Keys and then a second from Ms. Wyatt. Any discussion on those changes at all, board members? All right, seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. So the motion on the floor is to accept the January 28th, 2025 school board agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Very good. And the next item up is new administrators. Superintendent Hyde, would you lead us through that portion of our agenda?
My pleasure. This evening, we have a relatively short list. We have one new administrator and two administrative transfers. I'd like to invite to the podium Mr. Matthew Cooper, Sales Associate for Pro Marine Boat Sales, who's being reappointed to Assistant Director for Operations.
Good evening.
I guess you guys want me to say some word.
Yeah.
You had a choice, you could have hidden the audience. You didn't have to walk down here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hyde, for giving me the opportunity, and thank you, board members, for the recognition. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Rob Davis, Assistant Superintendent of Support Services, for giving me the opportunity. Thank you, Rob. I appreciate it. I brought my wife with me, Sarah, my sister and brother-in-law are here as well, Art and Kim Martinez, and we have friends with us, Lauren and Matt Hinton as well. I'm a Bartow guy. I'm a, sorry, I graduated from Bartow High School. I actually went to college, came home, and I worked at Bartow High School for 20 years. I was a coach there as well. I did leave and go to Pro Marine for a couple of years, and that was more of a opportunity that I couldn't say no to. I learned pretty quick that my heart was here and I wanted to be back here, so I'm proud to be back. Thank you, guys.
Welcome back. We're thrilled to have you. Please have your family join us. Please give them a round of applause. Friends can make their way down.
Art, we see you.
Come on, Art.
Yeah, come on.
You're not that short. Rob, come on down.
Art's trying to sneak down in his chair.
Congratulations again.
Mentioned as he came down here, he's in good company. People there. There are two administrative transfers I'd like to apprise the board of. Dr. Nakeisha Leatherwood, Principal at Citrus Ridge Civics Academy, was transferred to be Principal at McLaughlin Academy of Excellence, and Ms. Diamesha Williams, Acting Principal at McLaughlin Academy of Excellence, was transferred as the Acting Principal at Citrus Ridge Civics Academy. That concludes new or transfer administrators this evening, sir.
All right. Thank you, superintendent. The next item up is our special recognitions. Superintendent Hyde, would you lead us through our special recognitions at this time?
That is my pleasure. At this time, I'd like to ask board member Sarah Beth Wyatt to step down to assist us with this evening's special recognitions. Subsequently, I'd like to invite Gina Williams, Principal at Winter Haven Senior High School, to come forward for the recognition of Anna Maria Ruiz Pereira.
And I'm actually going to call Anna forward as well because I'm really excited to get to honor Anna tonight. So Ms. Williams reached out to me this summer because Anna was recognized, and I shouldn't say recognized, she was elected this summer from the entire state of Florida to serve as Governor of Girl State, which if you have not heard of Girl State before, it started in 1937, and every summer we have about 300 juniors getting ready to enter their senior year that go up to Florida State University, and they basically simulate government for an entire week. So they run campaigns, they're sent to different parties, they have to run a full campaign, get elected, several are appointed to different cabinet positions. So Anna ran a campaign and was elected governor. She is the first governor for Girl State from Polk County, which is a really big deal. So we wanted to recognize her tonight to say thank you for representing Polk County well, because she does, I know I was telling some of my colleagues earlier, you're going to remember this girl. She's the one that asked a lot of questions at Leadership Winter Haven, because she is so inquisitive and always represents not only Winter Haven High School really well, but Polk County as a whole. So, Anna, I'll let you say a few words.
Gratitude is a powerful force, and today I want to take a moment to let it guide my words. I stand here because of the unwavering support, love, and belief of so many remarkable individuals who have shaped my journey. To my teachers, my parents, my friends, and my loved ones, and the 300 incredible girls who shared this vision with me, thank you. You are the foundation of everything I am and everything I hope to be. Each of you has inspired me to believe in the power of change and the beauty of a shared dream. Together, we worked hard to be our community that uplifts and empowers where everyone has a chance to shine. To my Winter Haven family, thank you for welcoming me with open arms and giving me the opportunity to give me back to the place that has given me so much. This is, this spin I wear today is more than a personal milestone, it's a promise. It's a commitment to use every opportunity, every challenge, and every platform to amplify the voices of those who aren't always heard. It represents the dreams, the hopes, and the faith that each of you has placed in me. In a care that has responsibility with pride and humility. I also want to thank the Board of Education for the dedication and the auxiliary, for the care and wearing commitment to students like me. Your belief and the support of education and your passion for helping us grow is a gift we carry with us every day. Thank you for caring, for investing in our future, and for creating opportunities for us to thrive. To everyone here, your presence is a reminder that hope lives in all of us. Let's continue to be the change we wish to see, to lift each other up, and to inspire a world where everyone has a chance to succeed. With all my heart, thank you. Let's keep moving forward together.
We have some members from Girl State and the Auxiliary Board here, the local Auxiliary Board here, so if you guys want to come down for a picture. I also just want to note that I got, she's coming, she was just dropping off her folder. I also would just like to note that I got some not-so-great news from Anna before we started tonight, that she has decided to go to Florida State University.
Yes.
Which I'm sure Superintendent Hyde will be very excited about. However, she has promised me her goal is to go up there and learn as much as she can and come back to Polk County and bring her talents back here.
And that would be the Florida State University.
Winter Haven, Ms. Bachman, Winter Haven team, you're in this picture too.
Congratulations to her. That's awesome. That is awesome.
Well done. Well done.
Chair Allen, school board members, Superintendent Hyde, want to thank you for the opportunity to be here to recognize our winners from the Focus on Excellence Employee Recognition Campaign. We continue to highlight the important contributions that Polk County Public Schools make for students through our Focus on Excellence Employee Recognition Campaign. This campaign honors staff members from different employee groups who might get overlooked among the hustle of keeping one of the nation's 26 largest school districts running efficiently. Each quarter, the program will recognize a select group of employees through a nomination and committee process. 12 employees are selected as winners and will receive prizes from our generous sponsors as well as attend a special appreciation luncheon and be honored at a school board meeting. They will also be highlighted on the district's social media channels, website, and internal and external newsletters. Our employees are providing exceptional public service and making the motto "Students First" their mission. As we go into our fifth year of the program, we continue to see, add positive additions to enhance the program, but the most important benefit is bringing encouragement and appreciation to our employees and impacting their lives in a positive way. This wouldn't be possible without the generous support of our program sponsors, so I just want to really quick highlight them before I share more about our winners. IDX Brands, which is formerly Image Depot Express, Mid-Florida Credit Union, Public Supermarkets, Inc., Sign Gypsies, Hand and Stone Massage and Facial Spa, Chick Filet, A.D. Morgan, Central Florida Development Council, CPS Investment Advisors, Connect Ed Polk, Dixie Southern Industrial, Inc., Orlando Health, and the Club at Eagle Brook. I'd like to thank each of these businesses who constantly support the work of our school district and who have graciously come alongside us to make this campaign successful. Due to their financial support, we are able to give every PCS employee who is nominated through this program a special gift. Winners get a prize package valued at almost $600 as well. So, when each of the winners receive their notification that they are a winner, I ask them for, I give them a question of what do they love most about their job and what they do for Polk County Public Schools, and I'd like to share that with each of you. So I say, call your name up. If you could please come forward, if your direct supervisor or supervisors are here, if you have any family, please join them. The first one, I forgot to mention, the winners that we're recognizing are within the transportation, school nutrition, and non-classroom teacher positions. Our first winner is Robin Smith, who is a bus driver in Area 5 in Transportation Operations. What Robin said is, she said, "I absolutely love my job" because it allows her to make a difference in the lives of her students and coworkers, as well as the opportunity to inspire a positive impact on all of my students. Furthermore, the longevity of her 26 years of employment, way to go, that's amazing, with PCPS has been equally rewarding. So congratulations. We thank you and appreciate you. Lorraine Robinson. She's a bus driver, Area 7, in Transportation Operations. Ms. Lorraine said she is grateful to be nominated as one of the Focus on Excellence winners. She said she will always be a supporter, thanks be to God. She loves what she does and will continue to endure and be productive in the PCPS family. She said, "Thank you for choosing her, and thank you for choosing Polk County Public Schools, Lorraine. We appreciate you." Schools, Lorraine, we appreciate you." Sarah Lindgren is the School Nutrition Manager at Cleveland Court Elementary, but I believe she is not with us tonight. Just want to confirm, she is not here, okay. I do want to read about what she said though, because it's really important. So what Sarah Lindgren, School Nutrition Manager at Cleveland Court Elementary said is, "What she loves most about her job is the atmosphere of love that goes into the school. The children and staff are all working together to make sure we prepare the next generation for greatness. It's never a dull moment when working with children and all of their personalities, but watching them grow physically and mentally, you can't help but fall in love with this job." Thank you so much, Sarah, for what you do for Polk County Public Schools. Susan Cannon. Susan is a school-based reading coach at Fort Meade Middle Senior High. What Susan loves most about her job as a literacy coach is that she gets to wear many hats. She can be an advocate and/or a soft shoulder for her teachers, a cheerleader and supporter for her students, and a helper for administration and other staff members. It's kind of like being a grandma. You work really hard, but at the end of the day, you're filled with joy knowing you've made a difference for so many different people in individual and special ways. Congratulations. Thomas is a behavior interventionist at Lofman Oaks Elementary. Thomas says he loves working with the kids and his Lofman Oaks family and all the great things we are doing on our campus. It makes me feel proud to be a part of Polk County Public Schools and see firsthand how we truly put our students first. Congratulations. Alejandra Reyes Landron, who is a school psychologist in Psychological Services. Alejandra said, "As a Polk County Public Schools graduate, she loves working for our district because she is able to pour back into the community that helped mold her. What she loves most about her job as a school psychologist is that she is able to be a voice for the voiceless and shed light to strengths our children possess that may not always be observed." Thank you for what you do, we appreciate you. What Stacy loves most about her job is that every day, and everyone is different, which allows her to challenge herself daily. She also loves that she is still constantly learning and adapting while building relationships with students and staff and hopefully making a difference whether it is big or small, because her goal is to instill a love of lifelong learning. Thank you, Stacy. Jenna E. Bolley, she could not be here with us, however, I do want to read. She is an instructional coach at Lincoln Avenue Academy. What Jenna loves most about her job with Polk County Public Schools is making a positive impact on students' lives every day. The dedicated staff and extraordinary students at Lincoln Avenue Academy drive her to strive for greater accomplishments, and witnessing their academic and personal growth brings her immense joy. So congratulations to Jenna. Denise Sepulveda. Is a school, Denise is a school social worker in Student Services. Denise said that she could not be more grateful for being nominated and selected as one of the Focus on Excellence recipients. She appreciates the recognition and her heart is absolutely full. She has been working for Polk County Public Schools for almost 10 years, and she just loves the opportunity to be as good of a social worker as she possibly can be. She has a passion for people and creating a happy and safe place for everyone. A huge thank you for recognizing the work that she puts in. She's, this is what she said about her job, that she has fun creating and doing fun projects with students to provide a safe space at school. She enjoys building relationships with students, especially during counseling sessions where she really gets to know them. She loves being a support to families and ultimately knowing she can make a difference in our students' lives. Congratulations and thank you. Next we have Blanca Ardila Mora, who is a school social worker in Student Services. Blanca loves being a social worker because she said it's one of the greatest blessings in her life. Serving people is definitely her biggest passion. Therefore, working for Polk County Public Schools is more than a privilege because it has given her the opportunity to do what she loves, helping not only the students, but the parents, siblings, and very often their grandparents. As a school social worker, she has an advantage, because while other professionals can only work with the students, she has a blessing to be able to help, meet, and support the whole family. Thank you, Polk County Public Schools, for having me and giving me the happiness of serving others. Thank you. Bonnie said the best part about her job is that she has the privilege of helping teen parents learn parenting skills and encourage them to stay in school and continue their education. It is also a privilege to guide them as they struggle with difficult situations and challenges in their lives. Congratulations. Jamie is a school counselor at Polk Virtual. Jamie said the best part about working for Polk County Public Schools is walking alongside her students as they make the choices that will shape their futures. She gets the privilege of helping them to see what is possible and cheer them on as they move towards their goals. Though she has worked in many Polk County, she has worked for Polk County Public Schools for over 15 years and has loved each school that she has been a part of, Polk Virtual has given her a challenging and rewarding opportunity to see education from a new perspective, and she's absolutely thrilled to be a part of this amazing team. Congratulations. Before I call them all back to come for one last picture, I do want to say that congratulations to all of our winners. It's been a pleasure getting to know you and read your stories and why you do what you do and serve Polk County Public Schools, our community, and our children. You all are deserving of this recognition. In the coming weeks, we'll begin highlighting and spotlighting you on our social media channels as we continue to put the focus on you. In closing, I just want to remind you and empower you to continue being the amazing leaders you are and to continue just paying it forward to another PCPS employee during the year as the nominations and applications are open for, to submit. So in speaking of that, currently, our third group of employees nomination process is open, and will close on February 2nd, where we'll recognize our employees within the positions of classroom teacher and 12-month teacher positions. So for our audience and those watching online, you can always learn more about the program by visiting polkschoolsFL.com/excellence. And in closing, I just want to remind everybody of this quote, "That a person who feels appreciated will always do more than what is expected." So thank you all for what you do for Polk County Public Schools.
So we're breaking a bit of protocol because this item was not listed, so at this time, I'd like to give Board members enough time to go ahead and make their way down to the floor for a special recognition.
Diana, Diana, can you look to see if Ms. Miller is almost done? She was trying to get a charger.
Board member, we should just have you line up here in a moment, and I'll introduce the person that we're here to recognize. I thank you for your support in this. We're just waiting, because I know Ms. Miller had to step out because her phone charged, her phone was dead, so.
Well, we will proceed, and if hopefully she makes it back, I'll, I'll, I'll talk slow. So, Board members, as you know, we have, and as was noted here earlier by Ms. Crowley, we have some truly amazing dedicated employees here in Polk County Public Schools, and we're truly blessed to have them work with us each day in support of our initiatives, in support of our students, more importantly, in support of outcomes that benefit not only our students, their families, but our community as a whole. And these individuals who have worked with us, we, we, we learn them as, I've been here a short four years, you meet these individuals, they start out as employees, and then they become friends. And you share personal stories, and you learn a great deal about their background and their struggles and, you know, and the amazing things that they accomplish each and every day. So it's my pleasure this evening to have you assist me in recognizing Judge Bruce, who's here tonight. So Judd. So true story, earlier today, as he's giving his hugs, Judd saw me in a parking lot, and he said, "Mr. Hi, is this gonna be a long meeting tonight?" And I said, "Well, you never know." And he said, I said, "Are you covering tonight?" Knowing full well he had to cover tonight. And I said, "So, you're covering?" He said, "Yes." He goes, "My counterpart got called for jury duty and got picked." And I, I just couldn't help but laugh to myself, saying, "We did a good job, we did a good job." Fooling Mr. Judd to be here this evening. But he did say, "If he shows up, I'm leaving." So I was praying the whole time that he would not show up. But Judd, it's my pleasure, it's my pleasure having had the opportunity to work with you these short years. You're an amazing man, you're an amazing family man. Those of you don't know, Judd is raising his two grandchildren, who he speaks about highly, he loves them a great deal, and I know he's retiring here very short. I asked him this morning, I said, "So how many days left?" He goes, "Enough that I'm counting on one hand." And, you know, it's just an absolute pleasure, and you, you know, the pride in which you perform your duties each and every day, the follow-through is impeccable, you never get frustrated, you never get flustered, and I would tell you, I am not doing justice to help explain how many people here truly not only appreciate you, but love you. You're an amazing person, and we're truly blessed to have gotten to know you and work with you each and every day. So congratulations on your retirement, well deserved, and if you get fed up staying at home, there's always a place for you in Polk County Public Schools. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Board members, for indulging me in that, and I know that many of you were involved in this as well, so appreciate you taking the time to recognize one of our employees. Mr. Chair, that concludes special recognition for this evening.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. Just a quick thank you to everybody that joined us. This would be a good moment if you wanted to break away, but we will now transition within our meeting to public comments. This would be public comments for items on the agenda to be voted upon as adopted at the start of this meeting. So before we jump into that, I'd just like to welcome the public and just go over our public comment process and the opportunities for this evening. You'll actually have three opportunities for a public comment, the first one being items on the agenda, and then, as always during this time, comments will be limited to those on the agenda. The second is going to be for a public hearing, we do have a public hearing on a set of policies tonight. And then lastly, at the end of the meeting, we'll have additional opportunities for a public comment on items that are not on the agenda. So to register to speak, if you've not been here with us, just basically as you come in, there's a little table, and you're always welcome to sign up, just need a card, and we're here to listen to what you have to say. So we appreciate you being here tonight. So you'll see, basically, you're going to be given three minutes to speak, the light's going to turn yellow when you have one minute left, and then you'll hear a beep when your time is concluded. All comments should be directed to myself. All comments should be directed to myself as the board chair, as a reminder, public comments are an opportunity for us to collectively hear your thoughts and comments, this is not a question and answer time, and comments are not to be directed at individual board members, we're functioning as a body. But if you're seeking, you know, more information, I definitely encourage you to reach out to us. We try to take as many phone calls as we can, and I know board members are actively doing that, we field emails, all kinds of different ways that you can communicate with us, so we're, we're here to, to listen. So basically, the first person I'd like to call up at this point is Bobby Dees, and then on deck would be Glenda White. So Bobby Dees, if you can come up, and Glenda, there's a red line over there, we'll just be ready for you as well after Mr. Dees speaks.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Dees from Winter Haven. Tonight I'm speaking on Consent Agenda R, Subject One, Farm Workers Grant in Amount of $316,260. Basically, this grant provides financial assistance that allows recipients to pursue training per their individual employment plan for adults and students 14 years old and above. These funds shall be available to citizens or nationals of the U.S., lawfully admitted permanent resident aliens, refugees, asylees, and parolees, and other immigrants to work in the U.S. Most of these unvetted immigrants are coming here illegally. They are attending our public schools and are learning English on a taxpayer dime. And just like it is across the country, they're getting a free ride on everything. I've been coming here for several years now, talking about these grants, and over that period of time, that adds up to millions and millions of tax dollars being spent on these illegal aliens. I'm sick and tired of this type of government welfare and control. These illegals also pose a threat to our children's well-being. They've been attacking, raping, and killing our children all across the nation, and this is one good reason for parents to consider school choice. Soon, President Trump will end federal control of the education system, and illegal immigrants will be deported. You had better use this grant wisely, and I doubt there will be any more. Trump said today on the news he will pause federal loans and grants. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. We have Glenda White, that's up next.
Hi, my name is Glenda White. I want to address my concerns about, also about the farmworker grant, item R, Subject One on the agenda. My concern is how well do we know those to whom we're providing services? The description of this item clearly outlines it's designed to serve mainly those who are here illegally. The language in the description covers the school board technically, but less face facts. Since 2021, the Biden administration defied immigration laws that are currently on the books and allow literally millions of people into our nation without proper vetting. We can do all the U.S. vetting we want on the recipients of this grant, or for instance, illegals who volunteer at our school, at our schools, but we still have no information about their backgrounds before entering the U.S. The question I would ask the board to consider is what would be your reaction if one of our kids, having been exposed to these people, gets raped, trafficked, or murdered? Take one look at Sheriff Judd's monthly issue of the Cyber Star newsletter, and it becomes clear that many people who live in and travel to Polk County expecting to have sex with a child are illegals, whether the Biden administration tried to convince us they were or not. It seems to me by draping Polk Schools in the traitorous and weak policies of the Biden administration, you're leaving Polk Schools and possibly yourselves open to major lawsuit. We can estimate at least 38,000 illegals living in Polk County right now, and likely many more, given the huge growth in our county. Are we going to expose our kids to these people without serious vetting? You have before you right now many headlines that I have received just over the last year of horrible crimes committed on women and children across America. Will the Polk School Board now join the people who value these human cesspools more than our own children? I encourage you to raise vetting standards above federal requirements and limit access to Polk School resources only to those who crossed our border properly, at a legal crossing point, have been properly vetted, including the history, their own history in their own country, and are working an actual job rather than sucking our welfare system dry. If I was a parent with a child in school under these conditions, and my child was harmed by one or more of these people, I would sue the school board for failing to provide a secure environment for my child, and my child would never attend a Polk County school again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. All right, board members, at this point, we're going to now move to the approval of tonight's minutes. So we've got four sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the December 10th, 2025 Work Session Meeting. The chair will now entertain a motion to accept the December 10th, 2025 Work Session Meeting Minutes as written. Do I have a motion and a second? All right, Ms. Fields made the motion, and Ms. Miller seconded that. Any discussion? Did, did I hear you, Ms.?
We said it at the same time.
Oh, is it? Oh, all right, yeah, you're the winner, Ms. Miller. Very good. So any discussion, board members, on that set of minutes that you've seen in front of you? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Very good, and that motion carries. We are now moving to the second set of minutes, and that's for the December 10th, 2024 School Board Meeting. The chair is going to entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes as written. Do I have a motion and a second? All right, Ms. Fields made the motion, and Ms. Wyatt won the second this time. Any discussion, board members, on that second set of minutes? Seeing none at this point, I will call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? And that motion carries. We're going to move down to the third set of minutes at this point, and that's going to be for the January 14th, 2025 Work Session Meeting. So the chair is going to entertain a motion to accept the January 14th Work Session Meeting Minutes as written. Do I have a motion and a second? Or Mr. Keys made the motion?
Second.
And Ms. Wyatt made the second. And Mr. Nolte made the third. Any, any discussion, board members, on those meeting minutes? All right, very good. I'd like to call for a vote at this point. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? And that motion carries. Please take a moment to vote on the machine when you see it. We'll just keep moving here. We actually have a fourth set of minutes, and that's going to be for January 14th, 2025 Board Meeting Hearing for Matthew Lassiter. So the chair will entertain a motion now to accept these meeting minutes as written?
Second.
All right, Mr. Nolte made the motion, and Mr. Sharpless seconded. Any discussion on that item? Very good. I would like to call for a vote at this point. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? And that motion carries. The next item is the approval of today's Consent Agenda, and this would be F1. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the January 28th, 2025 Consent Agenda as written or printed. Do I have a motion and a second? Ms. Wyatt made the motion, and Mr. Keys seconded. All right, any discussion, board members, on the Consent Agenda before we vote? I was going to draw attention, if anybody's really tracking and looking at board member travel, I am aware of the, the charges on my room and trying to address those, the actual room rate is way, way lower, very thrifty, so I just want to be attentive to that, and I was going to draw attention to that. So the room rate actually was 249, so we are, we're trying to work with, evet, yes, I think everybody saw that. No, 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 no. Just want to make sure we're aware of that. All right, very good. Any, any other discussion, by the way, board members, on Consent Agenda items at this point? All right. We will now look for a vote on that. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right, we are now moving down to our Action Agenda. And our first item up is S1, this would be Crystal Lake Turnaround Option Plan. So as noted, this is the second application for the Crystal Lake Elementary top, which is due on January 31st, so you should be able to see more details regarding the reassignment and the closure option on, on Crystal Lake Elementary. So the chair will accept the motion and a second at this point. Yes, Superintendent, you were recognized.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, this is a turnaround option plan, but the board will recall that based off our recent, recent presentation before the State Board of Education in Destin, Florida, a little over two weeks ago, the board did grant us a one-year extension on our current turnaround option. So I know the top plan said closure and reconstitution, but I just want to make sure we clarify for the community that that school will continue to operate through an additional school year beyond this year, and so that's important to, for our community. Many of our business partners and community-based partners are very excited about that. The school is on a positive trajectory and likely will exit this year. They're just five points away from a C, and we fully anticipate that that school will meet those expectations. So I just want to make sure I provided that little bit of clarification. The board previously voted on this item before I presented it to the State Board of Education. The, the attachment here is blank, so we will make that correction and get you the updated form.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. Any other comments, board members? Okay, you've got the context at this point. At this time, I will now call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are now moving down to S2 on our Action Agenda item for tonight. This grouping of policies, board members that came before us during the September, the October, and the December through the rule development process, and now as an official action item. So we've had plenty of opportunities to distill on this, we've, we've searched for public feedback as well. So for point of record, I'm going to read the policy numbers and names into the record, and then I'll look for a motion from you. So we've got 0131, which is the legislative and policymaking policy, and this, moving down, we have 1242, this is professional learning. We're looking to adopt 1262 on anti-harassment, then 2210 on curricular development. Policy 2271, this is the articulation and access to the Florida College System Institutions. Then 2432, which is driver education. 3120.03 athletic coaches. 3120.08 entitled part-time extracurricular personnel. 3242 professional learning. 3362 anti-harassment. And then we have 4120.03 athletic coaches. And 4120.08 part-time extracurricular personnel. 4242 professional development. 4362 anti-harassment. 5463 credits from other schools. 5517.01 bullying and harassment. 5730 equal access for non-district sponsored student clubs and activities. 6210 fiscal planning. 8310 public records. 8330 student records. 8405 school safety and security. 8406 reports of suspicious activity and potential threats to schools. 8407 safe school officers. 8415 emergency crisis management. 8420 emergency management, emergency preparedness, and emergency response agencies. And we have 8510 wellness, and then lastly, 8600, which is transportation. So I just wanted to say thank you to Teresa Griffin and her work on this policy development, as well as our superintendent's attorney, Mr. Davis, as well. So there you have the policies, we've looked at them over a multi-month process, so I'll take a motion and a second for approval. All right, Ms. Fields made the motion, and Ms. Wyatt seconded. Any discussion, fellow board members, on these policies that we are adopting? All right, at this point, I'd like to call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? And that motion carries. And we are now moving down to S3, which is the Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee nominee, Chad Baron is what this one's entitled. The recommended action is to approve Chad Baron to our Oversight Committee. Does anyone wish to make a motion on this? All right, thank you, Ms. Miller, for that motion. And then we have a second by Ms. Wyatt. Any discussion, board members? I do see, Ms. Miller, you were recognized.
Sure, I would like to share a little bit about Mr. Baron with you and the viewers so they can understand who we are adding to our Half-Cent Sales Tax. And I just want to make a comment that I have had to replace three, so you get to hear from me three different times this evening. Okay, Chad has served as a chief financial officer for Bartow Ford for the past eight years. He has been a dedicated employee with Bartow Ford for over 20 years. He's an adaptive finance professional skilled in all aspects of operations. Chad became part of the management team of Bartow Ford that led the dealership to becoming the highest volume selling dealership in this, I feel like I'm a commercial, in the southeastern United States with over 230 million in sales, with over 300 employees who deliver top-notch customer service and ratings. Through his tenure, he has shared in the success of leading teams in both the front end and back end, which is a finance and accounting of the business. As CFO, Secretary, and Treasurer, he advises fellow board members and oversees all financial and corporate aspects of the business. We are happy to have Chad, he lives with his family in Auburndale, he's a dedicated servant leader in the community, he's a proud member of Bartow Leadership, Leadership Polk, and the Greater Bartow Chamber of Commerce engaged serves.
All right, thank you, Ms. Miller. And Ms. Wyatt, you're recognized.
Thank you. This is a great win for, for District 7, congrats, Ms. Miller, because what Chad didn't mention in his thing is that he is a Leadership Polk Class 15 member, which was my class and is the best class ever, but I believe he's also an inside PCPS at the moment, too. He's one that truly, he has kids in public school and said, "Hey, how can I make it better?" So I know he's been looking for, for all sorts of opportunities for how he can truly best understand the system and help however he can, so I'm thrilled to support this this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. All right, I don't see any other comments, board members, so at this time, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are now down to S4, which is Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee nominee, Ron Parks. So the recommended action is to approve the appointment of Ron Parks to the Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve this item? All right, Ms. Miller made the motion, and Mr. Keys seconded. Any discussion, fellow board members? All right, Ms. Miller, you were recognized.
I'm here to share with you about Mr. Ron Parks. Originally from New York, he's a longtime Lakelander. Ron has retired from Publix after 28 years. He served in Vietnam and was a training sergeant at West Point. Ron has made, made community service a priority since his retirement, and that's how I met him, working in the community in a lot of boards and committees he served on. He has served on many, focusing on financial stability and the transparent stewardship of funds. Ron is a dedicated member of the Rotary, I won't hold that against him because I'm a Kwanian. He believes in giving back to his community and supporting students in a variety of learning environments. He serves on the Florida Firearms Shooting Foundation, which provides young people with certified instructors teaching them firearm safety at no cost. He enjoys reading and is an avid historian. Among many of his avocations, he is a former airplane pilot, skydiver, and scuba diver. He enjoys riding his motorcycles that I worry about and collecting antiques. I just want to say that this is a great opportunity, Mr. Parks is involved in a lot of schools around the district, and after I made this recommendation, he actually won a day at one of our events, bidding on the superintendent for a day, and I'm glad that he wants to get to learn more about Polk County Public Schools, I think it will be an asset.
All right, very good, thank you, Ms. Miller. Yeah, I'm eager to hear about that day with Superintendent. He sent that award recently, I thought that was funny. All right, very good. Any other comments, board members? Very good, at this point. At this point, we will now, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. We are now down to S5. This is the Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee nominee Joseph Madigan. And that recommended action, again, is to approve the appointment of Joe Madigan to our Half-Cent Sales Tax Oversight Committee. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve this item? All right, we got Ms. Miller that made the motion. And Ms. Wyatt made the second. So Ms. Miller, you are recognized.
Thank you. I want to share a little bit about Mr. Madigan and his appointment. Joseph Madigan is a dedicated professional. He is the Director of Recruitment Outreach for Florida Southern College. So I'm sure Dr. Allen knows him. He's the Executive Director of the Florida Tour Committee. He has worked with over 15 years of experience in educational leadership and enrollment management. He currently serves as the Director of Recruitment and Outreach at Florida Southern. He has a proven record of fostering enrollment growth and developing innovative strategies to engage students and families. His commitment to improving educational access is evident in his ability to lead teams, mentor colleagues, and build strong partnerships with schools and communities. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Joseph is passionate about strengthening the local Polk County community. He's an advocate for initiatives that enhance educational resources, such as the school board's Half-Cent Sales Tax. His vision centers on empowering families and students by creating environments where they can thrive academically and socially. As a 12-year resident of North Lakeland, Joseph and his wife, Mandy Faith, who serves as speech-language pathologist for Central Florida Speech and Hearing, believe in the transformative power of education to drive community growth. Joseph's leadership roles include serving as the Executive Director of the Florida Tour Statewide College Fair Committee and presenting at numerous professional conferences, demonstrating his commitment to collaboration and excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Yeah, excited to vote for Joe Madigan. And we go all the way back before I even knew that he worked at Florida Southern, was at Church of the Mall. We were in a community group together. And he's just got a, just a hearty laugh, just a fun guy to be around. But I've just watched him recruit, you know, some of the highest caliber students from all across the nation into Florida Southern College. And then a lot of those students actually stay in our community as well. So just a great strategic thinker and has made a big impact at Florida Southern, for sure. So happy to be voting for him tonight. So at this point, board members, I'd like to call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right, we are now down to S6. The recommended action is to approve the Point Sienna area high school options. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve this item? All right, Ms. Wyatt made the motion, and Ms. Fields seconded. Board members, now is your opportunity to offer any feedback on this one. It's up for discussion. All right, I see, Ms. Fields, you're recognized.
Thank you. We had a lot of discussion about this item earlier this afternoon. So I would just basically say it's been a long, tedious process. I know there's been a lot of concern about whether or not it might look the way it should look. I know that the superintendent slowed it down to make sure that we dotted all of our i's and crossed all of our t's and vetted it. And one of the things that we mentioned earlier in the day, Dr. Allen actually mentioned it, is that we, I think most of us know the RADA Construction Company and family, and they are very reputable and very respectable and very involved in our community. And I think that's one of the things that helped me to feel comfortable with this decision, along with looking at the committee members' tally sheet and looking at the price difference and just the whole conglomerate thing. So I am definitely in support of moving this on because there's a need in that area, and we have, I think, prolonged it enough, and we need to move forward.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Sharpless, you are recognized.
Yes, so I, throughout the process, I've certainly brought up my opinions on certain things. But one thing that's certain, we need, we desperately need another high school in northeast Polk. The community is growing at such a rapid rate. And so the quicker we can get this done, the better. And so that's why I will be supporting this tonight. You know, and I think the P3 option is something, a good model to look at, you know? It's something that hopefully we can, I mean, more population growth in our county, we're going to have to build schools faster. And so we have to do what we have to do. And so, I mean, ideally, is, you know, if I could make things perfect in my world, I would. But it's not perfect. But we have to get it done. And so I think we're doing what's responsible for the taxpayer of this county. We're saving funds, and that's something that I've said from the beginning, it's important to me. So I'll be supporting it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. Mr. Keys, you're recognized.
I would just say that this is my backyard, and I've witnessed firsthand the growth. As a matter of fact, I, many days, I will avoid some roads in order to get to where I need to go because of the growth has been so substantial. And I would say that, you know, I understand the, from looking at this, the outside before coming on this board, this is, I think, probably two years past due. It's something we need so badly. As a matter of fact, I wouldn't, I'd be surprised if we don't see we need another school sooner after this. But for me, the two things have always been, how can we control costs, right? What's the best value to the taxpayer and to the district? And number two, how quickly can we get it done? Because it's a need. So I think those two parameters being met, that we have a plan going forward. It's going to get started, and also that we are cost-conscious about it. I think it's something that's long overdue. So I will be in favor tonight, and I applaud the superintendent for being diligent and looking at all options and making sure that the process is understood because we all know what cost overruns can do. And I enjoy the fact that this is going to be an all-inclusive product, and we will see those costs controlled, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Keys. And I don't see any other comments. I'll just give just some lasting remarks. If you want to see my more extensive remarks, I probably wrote a book during work session. It was very long. But I just wanted to get my thoughts out there. And I have a lot of frustrating thoughts on the process. And I'm hesitant to vote, but I am supporting this item tonight. I think my biggest concern was a vote that I cast way back in 2021. And my concern wrapped around what happened with that vote. But one thing that I am reflective of is this is a new process. It's a new process for Polk. It's a new process for the state. And I'm reminded of that based on a most recent exit interview we did with our state auditors. And the gentleman from the state that was doing our audit, he used the term unusual to describe our scenic terrace P3 project. That's a great project that we did in Polk County in record time across the state. People are looking at that project. So when I think about that and I reflect on that, it is. This is an unusual process. It's unique. And we had some barriers, and we had some hurdles that we had to go over. But so I am going to just hesitant, hesitantly support this tonight with the caveat, the superintendent, I do not want to have to approve another $11 million portable project at Haynes City. So let's get this thing done so I don't have to vote to renew that lease on that portable city at Haynes City. So those are my comments. All right, board members, at this point, I'll now take a vote from you. And those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. And that passes unanimously. We are now moving down to S7. And that's Lantern Specialty Care, formerly known as Surgery Plus. This is an optional elective for surgery benefits. So the recommended action is to approve this item as approved by the school board at the December 10th meeting. So does anyone wish to make a motion on this item? And a second? All right, Ms. Fields made the motion, and Ms. Miller seconded. Any discussion, board members, on this item? Ms. Wyatt, you are recognized.
Thank you. Yes, I will not be supporting this item. And my comments for this item go for both this and the next item. I do want to clarify that I don't believe that this was approved on December 10th. At least according to our minutes, it was not. It was presented to us back in November. I think I have been very clear since we started talking about some of the changes we were looking at to our health insurance plan in September, that I would not approve anything that affected our 2025 health insurance plan that was not, or health insurance, health benefits that was not advertised to our staff during the open enrollment period in October. This was not advertised to our staff during open enrollment in October. And I don't feel like I can support any changes that were not, that we did not give our staff the appropriate amount of time to make decisions based on whether or not the plan that we have in 2025 is what was going to best fit their family. We have several employees that could get health insurance through spouses or other people that, you know, if costs are going up for some things that we provide, it may be a better option to buy into a spouse's health insurance plan. So for those reasons, I cannot, I will not support anything that changes our health benefits. And I just want to reiterate that moving forward, anything that we're looking at for 2026, I will not support unless it is come to us by September so that it can be advertised with our, our open enrollment process in October. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Ms. Miller, you're recognized.
I am supporting this this evening, but I am looking forward to the time we have in retreat to talk about the expectations. Serving on one of the committees for the insurance, it was apparent that we do not have a process in place that will be competitive with what's happening. To know that we had a vendor for 20 years that didn't go out, to know today that they're telling us that they're giving us a product much less than what we were carrying, but we had a liaison, you know, doing their job, but not alerting us. I think when we make our expectation that we're going to have a process to know that we are getting the best for our dollars because health insurance is only going up, and it's one of the only things we have left to recruit as people are being paid more around the state, around us, around this county. So as I approve this tonight, I am looking forward to developing a process to know that we are competitive with our health bids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I'd like to call for a vote at this time. I don't see any other comments. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. And that motion carries. That's what I, yeah, 5-2. All right, very good. So we are now moving to S8. This is Quantum Health, Healthcare Navigation, Coordination, and Medical Management. The suggestion is to approve this. And for new benefit, per board-approved RFP, Group Health Plan Services. So does anyone wish to make a motion on this item? All right, Ms. Fields made the motion. And Ms. Miller seconded. Any discussion on this item at this time? All right, I would like to call for a vote at this point. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
And that motion carries. All right, and next, board members, we are going to go into our public hearing at this point. I now open the public hearing. The first order of business is any comments on public hearing agenda items. We have not received any cards at this point on the public hearing items. So we will now... I just had on-agended items. Ms. Wyatt. I'm S, Action Agenda Policy Updates. So was it on our policy that's within the public hearing? Or was it on the policies apart to, what's that? I mean, you know, I think... Okay, so if you can address that to us, just make sure we get the cards filled out properly at the beginning? All right. But if you could send the email, we will, again, you know, we'll have multiple opportunities to hear those again.
I'll do that.
All right. So we will now close the public hearing at this point. The next item on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Superintendent, hi, do you have a report for us tonight?
I do, Mr. Chair. A couple of quick things. Before I do the superintendent's report, as a portion of my superintendent's report, I should say, very pleased with the turnout. Thank you for all of you who helped represent at many of our Martin Luther King Jr. Days activities. There were multiple parades over several days. That's the same weekend, too, that we had our debate competition at Florida Southern. So it was a very busy weekend, but a great weekend to participate and great turnout. And appreciative of all the staff and the team who helped decorate our float. Each year, we try to make sure we have representation in multiple areas. And again, we had schools and their bands turn out. We had cheerleaders. We had great representation in Polk County, so very appreciative of that. Also very appreciative of all the students who submitted their essays for the competition. I got to participate in that last Thursday. Again, thank you, multiple, several of you attended that. Very, very pleased. I know our kids were thrilled. Apparently, Mr. Travis, Mr. Keys and I look alike because a student was sent over to talk to the superintendent, so I guess you're superintendent now. So she spoke with you. But it was a great, it was a great opportunity to see our students and to hear their speeches, and they were so well-written and such a passion behind those students. And just for those of you who were in attendance and board members, unfortunately, we had one grade-level first-place winner who was too shy to read her poem in front of everyone. We are actually going to go to the school, videotape her in her classroom, and then we'll play that for you here at a future board meeting. So we don't want to miss, have her to miss that opportunity to share her thoughts and her essay, which that won her first place. So that being said, the next work session meeting will be held on February 11th, 2025. The work session will begin at 9:00 a.m. The meeting will be held at the District Office located at 1915 South Floral Avenue in Bartow. That concludes my superintendent's report, sir.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. We are now going to move past the attorney's report to our auditor's report. Ms. Matthews, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, I bring a recommendation for the appointment of Mr. Ryan Williamson to the Audit and Finance Committee. He is being nominated by school board member Sarah Beth Wyatt to fill the vacancy in the District 4 seat. Mr. Williamson is an insurance sales agent for Barfield Insurance and Financial Services in Winter Haven. He has over 15 years of experience in the financial sector, including banking and serving as Deputy Finance Director for the City of Auburndale. He is a skilled professional with a strong educational foundation in both marketing and accounting. Mr. Williamson earned a bachelor's degree in marketing from Florida State University, we won't hold that against him, and a master's degree in accounting at Florida Atlantic University. He is committed to his community, having actively participated in local chambers of commerce and other civic organizations. He is married to his wife Rochelle, and they have three children, ages one and a half, four, and seven. Mr. Williamson's three-year term will commence with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. So the suggested action, board members, is to approve the appointment of Mr. Ryan Williamson to the Audit and Finance Committee. It's a three-year term. The chair welcomes a motion at this time. Ms. Wyatt made the motion, and Mr. Keys seconded. And any discussion at this point? I see Ms. Wyatt, you are recognized.
Thank you. I am very excited for Ryan to be interested in serving in this committee because audit and finance is not typically everybody's favorite topic. But Ryan will be a great asset to this committee. He's got a financial background. He also has kids in our school, and that's really where his interest stemmed from, is, hey, how can I, how can I try and make this the best school system that it can be? What skills do I have that I can offer to help support the district? So I'm excited to appoint Ryan. I also want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Keys because I had been desperately looking for an appointment for the Finance and Audit Committee. Ms. Matthews had texted me several times to say, do you have anybody? Do you have anybody? I'm sure none of you have gotten those threatening texts from Ms. Matthews that just make you feel very guilty. But Mr. Keys, at our Leadership Winter Haven event, told a great story about how he was appointed to this committee because he wanted to get involved, and all of the other committees he got appointed to because he wanted to get involved. And so at the end, I said, hey, I have an appointment if anybody's interested. And Ryan reached out that he was interested in getting involved as well. So I appreciate you sharing your positive story.
As long as he doesn't blame it on the lady.
All right. Well, I appreciate you sharing your positive experience to get him interested. So thank you all.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Superintendent, you are recognized.
Actually, Mr. Chair, mine will, if you'll come back to me after you conclude this topic.
All right, very good. Now I'd like to call for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Superintendent, you are recognized.
Mr. Chair, point of procedure. The staff have reported that they did not accurately capture a motion and a second for the Crystal Lake Elementary School Turnaround Option Plan. So we are required to have that because the submission is due on January 31st.
Okay.
We have good staff. They pointed it out to me.
Indeed. If we could revisit that. We were excited about, you know, your report as well. So, all right. So, board members, we can go back to S one. That would be the Crystal Lake Turnaround Option Plan. I just basically need a motion and a second on that. All right. So Ms. Fields made the motion, and Ms. Wyatt seconded. Any discussion? Anything else, Superintendent?
No, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right. Very good. At this point, no other discussion around it. I would like to call for a vote.
You have to vote on that item. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Very good. And that motion carries. Thank you. All right. We are now down to our board members' report. And I'm going to start in chronological order. So that means, Mr. Keys, you are first. You are recognized.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Just want to say that it has been a very busy time here in the past month within the county and was able to do quite a few things. I think the first of those was going to the 21st Annual Polk State Martin Luther King Jr. Luncheon. Fabulous turnout there, and we got to hear from Vice Mayor West, and what a positive message there. Also, the recently, the Lakin Economic Forecast Breakfast. It's interesting to be in that crowd and to hear what's going on as far as economics concerned in the future and with the whole prior area in the country. Was able to attend the Friday night after that, the All County Orchestra Program. And I will tell you, oh, my gosh, the amount of talent that these students have. And I feel kind of, I don't know, maybe it's since I've become a father, I've gotten soft. But I literally, tears come to my eyes when I listen to these students and the talent they have. It rivals any other professional show you'd go to, whether it be in New York City, Chicago, some professional... These are our students, and we should be proud. And then to follow with that, a little bit more selfish, is went to the next day, on Saturday, the All County Drama Competition, to where a lot of our students scored superior and critics choice in that from our school. So they are coming up on states very soon. And I went, that one was, like I said, a little bit more selfish for me because my daughter was there. So, but just the amount of talent that we have across the county in these programs we offer our kids, especially in one of those things that's near and dear to me is the arts. And to have them participate in those programs, I think, is one of those things that drives them to come to school and to be attentive and to give it their all, because we all know they can't participate in these programs unless they can also perform academically, which is very, very powerful. So it gives them kind of that added incentive to do a good job and to show up. And I'm just, I'm amazed every time that I go to one of these competitions, one of these shows, and see how much talent that these students have. And I'm just thankful to be a part of the county and to witness those things.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Keys. Moving down to District Three, that would be Mr. Nolte.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. I attended several sporting events, and it's great to see all the backing from the parents and their siblings. And just great to have sporting events in our school system. So everybody that, well, that doesn't like to sit down and do the books all the time can do it because they need to, to keep their grades up, to participate in the sport. And I'd like to thank Judd for all the help he's given me since I've been here. And he's just done a great job, and I can't thank Judd enough, and I wish him the best in his retirement. I also attended the monthly Head Start Meeting, and we've got some super, super people in that program. Kerry's doing a great job. And if we could even expand on that, would even be easier and helpier. Would help those kindergarten teachers because the students would be used to coming to school. And as I've gone around and visited many schools, I just am so happy to see the, oh, the teachers, the aides, administration, bus drivers, food service, custodians, coaches, grounds crew, facilities, phys ed teachers, student service, social workers, just everybody's doing a great job. And we can definitely be proud of how hard they work. And I wish I could just wave a crystal ball or a crystal wand or something and give them all about a 50% pay raise, but I can't. But I sure appreciate everybody's dedication and hard work. And we keep up the good work because we can see those grades and test scores coming up. So just everybody, keep up the good work. And we thank you all, you people and parents out there that are coming to the meetings here and helping and backing out and volunteering your time and reading to the students. And it's just great to see the community come together to try to help Polk County School System out. And thank you so much, and keep up the good work, and Happy New Year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Moving to District Four. Ms. Wyatt, you are recognized.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. I think we all got to hang out in Lakeland for Leadership Lakeland Day a couple of weeks ago, which was a great opportunity to share with some of our leaders in the community of different things going on in Polk County Public Schools, different things on the horizon, and really give a behind-the-scenes look of what's going on in Polk County. I know overwhelmingly, it seemed like from that group that there is way too much to talk about in Polk County Public Schools to fit it all into one day, which is why we now have Inside PCPS. But it was a great opportunity to get questions and feedback from individuals that are looking to get more involved and truly looking to see how they can help. I also wanted to, and I meant to bring this up earlier, so I apologize, but I, for Polk Vision's operating board, we had a presentation from the health team last month. They will be doing a workgroup presentation of the data that they have on Tuesday, February 4th, from 10:00 to 11:30. If anyone is interested, let me know. I can send that to Ms. Evette to share out with the board. But if anyone's interested in attending, that is open to the board. And then last, I just want to give a huge shout-out to both of the departments that were recognized at the beginning of the meeting for Focused on Excellence. Being down there and being right in front of the employees' supervisors and teams behind them is probably one of the coolest looks because just seeing how excited their bosses are for them to be recognized is really fun to watch. But I also wanted to share, this was posted on social media by one of our employees this week, and it gave a huge shout-out to the Transportation Department and the culture that they have built in transportation. So this was an employee that was in a car accident with his wife in a personal vehicle, just reflecting on that time. During this time, our safety specialist, law enforcement, saw that I was freezing and took his jacket off for me to cover my arms. The new assistant director showed up, even though he was off the clock, going out of town, gave me heat in his truck, and we followed the ambulance to the hospital where Mr. Davis shows up and sits with us until we're released. Brought us back to the compound. Mr. Millar was out that day, but drove all the way across the county to see if we were okay. All the area managers and the office staff also showed concern, checking on us. We've also had many drivers, not just from my area, but many others, call to check and offer any assistance that we may need. It's not just the small acts of kindness, but the generosity and true concern they show. Not just that day, but every day since, they have followed up and offered support. Like I said at the beginning, there are some days that are better than others, but my wife and I are proud to be part of the Polk County Public School Support Staff. I've been in several roles in various companies over the year, and I can absolutely say that none of them, I would have said, felt like family atmosphere, but this does. So I just want to give a huge shout-out to Rob and his team because that is a culture that has been built in support services and that there is a true credit that needs to go to that leadership team because that is, I think, the culture that we strive for in every department. And that concludes my report.
That's awesome. Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Moving to District Five, that would be Ms. Fields.
Dr. Allen, as Superintendent Hyde referenced earlier, January has been a very busy month, celebrating the legacy and the life of Dr. Martin Luther King. And there were many neat activities throughout the month. A couple of activities I want to expound on. For the first time ever, the MLK Commission for the City of Lakeland had the MLK Grand Marshall Gala. And that was where we were able to recognize our grand marshal for the parade. And the gentleman who was recognized, Mr. Maurice Chesane, he's a former educator. He was a teacher at Southwest Middle School. And his wife also was a teacher, I think, at Crystal Lake. But both of them were recognized, but specifically, he was. And so that was a neat thing, and we had great attendance at that event, at the Coleman Bush Building. And then we had the parade that was referenced, and I think many of you here were a part of that parade, for the Lakeland Parade, rather. And that was a neat event. And then, Dr. Allen, you and I were able to go to the Unafraid Breakfast on the day of Dr. King's birthday celebration. And there might have been others as well. So there were just many neat things. And as we, in the month of January, we get ready to go into the month of February, and that's where we recognize Black History Month. And so this Saturday, at the Florida Children's Museum, between the hours of 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., they would have the African-American Heritage Celebration. And so they're going to have a lot of entertainment, and they're asking the community to come out and to support them. And so we want to just be mindful of all the things that's going to be going on in February. And then the last thing that I wanted to say, I mentioned this to Mr. Hyde, is Girls Inc. is a part of Picfest, so we are one of the charities. We were there Thursday of last week. It was cold, incredibly cold, and rain, a lot of rain. And Mr. Townley, I don't know his first name. You know his first name, Superintendent? Michelle Townley, Michael? Matt? Okay. Mr. Matt Townley has a team that participates every year. And he came through the gate that we were operating. And he saw that we were freezing cold, and he went and bought coffee for the volunteers. And I wanted to just personally and publicly thank him for that. He didn't have to do that, but it was very thoughtful and very kind of him. And that's the kind of folks that we have as a part of the Polk County Public Schools. So, Mr. Townley, if you're listening, thank you so much. We really appreciate you and your students. I don't know how they fared in the competition. Superintendent Hyde, do you know?
I have not received score results.
Well, I know they have a great team, so I'm sure...
There's several high schools competing that day. We've not received the score reports.
There were quite a few teams, even from other school districts. So it's really beginning to be a big thing. So I just wanted to thank him. So great week in February. We're looking for some outstanding things to continue.
Indeed. Thank you, Ms. Fields.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sharpless, you are recognized.
So got a few things to talk about tonight. In December, since our last meeting, I was able to judge the FFA sub-districts contest up in North Lakeland. I was able to judge the creed contest. And so these are middle school and ninth graders. They're reciting a five-paragraph document that was written many, many, many years ago. And the creed is the beliefs of the FFA. And I was absolutely blown away by the talent and the public speaking ability of our students. I do want to, I'm not going to recite the whole five paragraphs to you, but I do want to recite one paragraph so you kind of understand what kind of, what they're saying, okay? "I believe in leadership from ourselves and respect from others. I believe in my own ability to work efficiently and think clearly with such knowledge and skill as I can secure, and in the ability of progressive agriculturalists to serve our own and the public interest in producing and marketing the product of our toil." This is, I mean, this isn't, this is great things that they're learning. They're having to memorize this, and it's, you know, when you recite things over and over, it really imprints in your mind. And so I just wanted to say that I was very impressed with the public speakers and the creed speakers that I got to judge. Also, back in December, I went to the Polk Vision Holiday Lunch. I served a two-year term on the Polk Vision Operating Board. I was, I truly a great organization, one I hope to stay involved with in the future. I, just some great, great things that are happening in Polk Vision. And I appreciate Board Member Miller and Board Member Wyatt for continuing to serve on that organization and bringing updates to us. Even tonight, Board Member Wyatt brought an update to us. Another thing I did in December is I decided that, you know, there's a lot of people that are unsung heroes of our school district, and we recognize them in our Focused on Excellence. And one thing I did is I decided I was going to do a ride-along on a school bus. Okay? And I was able to ride along with school bus driver Kathy McClure Lewis, bus 2112, down in Frostproof, close to where I live. And I was able to ride the routes and see the issues that they face. One thing that was great was seeing the Reaxium technology for students to check in the buses, also seeing the stop-arm cameras. And I asked, have you seen a reduction in people trying to pass our school buses with the stop-arm cameras out? And she said that she has seen some, there's still, I mean, she said, we pulled up to one stop of a young man that literally trembles in fear because one time he was getting ready to come out and go across the street to get on the bus, and a car almost hit him. That's why we did what we did, at least it's what this board member chose to vote and support those stop-arm cameras, to reduce that kind of behavior and keep our kids safe. I'll just leave it at that. But it was a great time, an eye-opening experience for me to ride on that bus. And I highly suggest all board members to be able to do something like that because you will learn a lot. And it was fun, too. I'm going to take a little bit of personal privilege here and congratulate my father-in-law, Ronnie Meeks. I was able to attend his retirement party in January. He served our district 38 years. 38 years for Polk County Public Schools in maintenance. And just want to, I'm sure either my wife or my in-laws are watching right now. Just want to say congratulations. You deserve retirement. 38 years is a long time to put into our system. And, you know, again, some of those unsung heroes that are out there, our maintenance people out there working in our schools. I want to end on something that's happening this week, something that I'm very, very passionate about. I get excited about. I'm a board member for the Polk County Youth Fair. And this week is our Polk County Youth Fair. It's, we have students from all over our county, and they're exhibiting their animals, their plants, their consumer, consumer science projects, you name it, all sorts of things. And, you know, it's something that may not get the highlight. I have a feeling, though, that it's starting, again, to get highlights. I appreciate that. We have a great superintendent who does highlight different programs. In the past, it might not have gotten the PR I think that it deserves. But I definitely think that highlighting those students and those FFA students are great, and 4H and everything. But if you have a chance, it's right here in Bartow on 17, in the south part of town. Go and check it out. You can go to PCYF.net, and you can look at their schedule. I know I will be there tomorrow morning at 5:15 a.m., getting ready to weigh steers in at 6:00. So, yeah, I'm going to need a lot of caffeine tomorrow morning. But just support our youth. And the one thing, I'm going to end with this. I saw a picture at the Polk County Youth Fair on the barn, on one of the barns. And I'm going to quote it here, and I'm going to challenge everyone in the audience. It says, "Somewhere in this barn, there is a little kid who wants to be just like you someday. Always be the best that you can be." And so if we remember that when we're working with our youth, that people are looking up to you. I mean, it doesn't matter your position, your title, any of that. You're somebody's hero. Try to act with that in mind, okay? And I appreciate the time I get to spend here and give you a little of my reflections. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Sharpless. Moving to District Seven, Ms. Miller, you are recognized.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. I just have a couple of things. First, I just want to talk about Isabel that was here. I'm telling you, 3DE program is changing the lives of the students at Tinnerock, and I would love for you to be a part of it. So if you're listening, if you're a staff member at home or a community member that wants to be a part of the 3DE as a volunteer, they do look for coaches to coach the students, as well as judges to judge their presentations. And I'm always surprised at what these kids are doing, and I'm thankful that they let us be involved sometimes as board members. I want to thank Dr. Anthony and his staff. I was in my first MLK parade this year in Lakeland. I can tell you that the Lakeland City staff told me there were more entries in that parade than even the Lakeland Christmas Parade, which, that's a lot if you think about it because Lakeland Christmas Parade is huge. I love talking to the community and meeting the kids, getting ready to dance. They were so excited. But the one thing I think they love, so I told the superintendent we have to bring it back, is we had a school bus. And so as the school bus came down the road, you could hear the kids screaming, there's the bus, there's the bus. And the parents are like, when can they get on it? And the parents are like, "When can they get on it?" And I, you know, they're ready to put them back, send them back early. But I said, "Not until Tuesday." But it was a great morning. It was great weather, so I hope to participate in that again. I also enjoyed the essay contest, which we've, I've gone to several years, but I haven't been in the last couple of years. So it was great to go back and meet those kids and listen to their words of unity and listen to their words of love and acceptance. And I think that all of us should be inspired by them, because I truly am. And one other thing with schools is, I kind of mentioned this earlier. I don't know that I mentioned it here at the board. But I was with some high school students at Winter Haven High School that were part of the Big Brothers Big Sisters School-to-Work Program. And there was an accidental overlook of the busing schedule, so we had no bus show up. I had 16 kids out in front of the school with no bus. City of Winter Haven was waiting for us at their water, wastewater management, treatment management plant to show the kids what those jobs are like and mentor the students. And so as we all started to panic and think of how many kids we could fit in cars, maybe I shouldn't tell him that, but anyways. I called Tom Phillips with Citrus Connection and just said, "Hey, where's the closest, you know, bus? Can we get there?" And he said, "I got you, no worries." And in 12 minutes, I had two Citrus Connection vans pull up to put these kids in and get them to their event at the wastewater management plant. And so that's what community is. It's people seeing a need and filling it quickly. So I appreciate Tom and his entire staff. The ladies were super excited to get our kids to that project. And lastly, I do not know what I'm going to do without Judd. I'm telling you that that sweet man has been a lifesaver. When I came on the board, we were in that small room, which was, had a lot of technical issues just because it was older and we were all packed in there. And then the big move to Jim Miles with all that came with that. And the fact that I can't find my charger half the time or the cord to my computer. I spent a lot of time with Judd, and I just think he's an amazing person. So I'm glad that I got to know him here, and I hope we get to keep in touch. And I think his story is pretty amazing. He started out at Mosaic. He went into IT as a second career. And so I think that's inspiring even for our kids, that even if you start, you know, you can have midlife and decide to change direction and do great things. So we appreciate Judd, and I'm glad that he is going to stay in touch with us and spend time with his family in retirement. Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I'll just conclude as well. Busy days, and just love hearing everything that you all are involved in. It's pretty amazing. Just wanted to note, yeah, we had an opportunity to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. and his contribution to our society. Ms. Fields mentioned the Interfaith Breakfast. That was a great event, very reflective. Had a chance to sit with Ashley Troutman, good friend of mine, who chairs the Lighthouse Ministries Board, along with Mr. Turberville. They're doing great things in our community. And then thinking about the inspiration and the inspiring words at the MLK Essay Contest. You know, there were a lot of pictures that were taken at the event. And, you know, so we have those, like, physical memories. But there's one picture that did not, you know, get taken, but it's in my mind. And it will always be imprinted in my mind. At the very end of the event, as we were wrapping up, Mr. Suarez was emceeing the event, and they were calling the evening. This young girl, probably, I don't know, first or second grade, maybe, comes up and basically targets Mr. Keys, myself, and Ms. Miller. And she's like, "I've got my essay. I want to read it. I want to read it to somebody. I want to get up on stage and read it." Well, we had closed the evening out, and everything was starting to shut down. And us three pulled our chairs off to the side and had a chance to hear this young lady read her essay. I mean, it was an incredible moment, and she was just so eloquent in her words and so courageous to do that. That memory will be everlasting, for sure, in my brain. So, congrats to our winners for that. And then, yeah, definitely it was a pleasure to spend time at Kathleen High School for the Leadership Lakeland. I tell you, Jeanette Crowley is, man, she is special. She is everywhere within our community. And just her work on that and chairing that and leading that education day was pretty amazing. And, you know, just looking out in the crowd, you see so many individuals. And one stuck out to me in particular was TJ Wright. He basically is with the YMCA. And he had a big influence in my son's life in, like, middle school. And there he is, you know, in this leadership capacity out in the crowd. It was pretty great to see him and just reflecting on the role that he had in my son's life. So, I don't know. Thirdly, I was just thinking, congrats to our great sheriff, you know, on the recent swearing-in of him and his service to our community. And the superintendent was there, and several board members had a chance to take part in his swearing-in ceremony. I've never owned a cowboy hat in my life, but when I see those Sheriff Grady cowboy hats, you know, I've got a little interest, but I don't know if I would ever own a cowboy hat, but... I probably need one so then I could go to the youth fair with Mr. Sharpless over here. I do have a story about the youth fair, but anyway. Then lastly, I want to say thanks to Dr. Melanie Ryder. Man, she is one passionate educational force within our community. Connect Ed is the initiative. It used to be Lakeland Ed, Lakeland Leads, which is now Connect Ed Polk. She just had this, you know, a set of, you know, incredible educators from, I believe, Indiana, Ohio, and then from Washington, D.C., the U.S. Chamber Foundation. I was really impressed with the foundation's work. Nikki DeSilva was her name, and she talked about the Talent Pipeline Management Curriculum, and it was very intriguing. And pretty much these educators from different states, Ohio, Indiana, had gone through that Talent Pipeline Management and had some really incredible pilot initiatives that they were doing around the state and so forth. So, again, we've just got some great educators within our community doing phenomenal work. And, you know, reflecting on Justin Sharpless and his passion around the youth fair, 30, I think it was 33 years ago, my brother, who's no longer here with us, raised a pig and took him to the youth fair. And that is like a lasting memory. I remember, like, you know, loading the pig up and taking him to the youth fair. And the pig's name was Picasso. Picasso, I'll never forget it. But, yeah, incredible. Love what was happening. Board members, thanks for sharing all the incredible things that you're doing to serve our community. And that's all I have for my report tonight. We are going to now transition board members to our public comment and wrap up our evening here. This is the next item on our agenda. It's a public comment addressing items not on the agenda. So as noted, to speak, if you could please fill out one of the three different cards that we have. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light's going to turn yellow when you have one minute left, and you'll hear that beep. Again, note that these are comments that we are going to actively listen and participate around, so no immediate action that was going to be taken tonight on those things. So if that is a necessity, we will take care of that. So I have a list of individuals who have signed up to speak. When I call your name, if you can come up. First one is Victor Chandler. So good to see you tonight, Victor. And then on deck, we have Tiffany Locke. Tiffany Locke is on deck. There's a red line over there. If you can just stand by. So glad you all are here tonight.
Victor Chandler, Eagle Lake, Florida. Now, over the last 50 years, the Senior Management Services Class salary schedule has increased as a percentage far greater than that for a teacher. Theirs has increased greater than inflation, and teachers far less than inflation. To understand how that occurred, because that seems impossible, you must understand what a step raise represents. Now, I would have loved to use the teacher's salary schedule, but as you know, it's an absolute abomination. So what I did was I created a salary schedule for you. I gave you one two months ago, gave you another one. If you'll turn to page side one of the presentation here, I made steps 2%. And there's 12 steps coming down through there. And I assumed that the inflation rate would be 2%. That's Federal Reserve, what they do. As you can see on side one, that if you were given a step off of this, that regardless of where you move from to, you would get a 2% raise. Now flip over on the other side. And let's see what happens when you give the superintendent, senior management, the same raise as you get. Because after all, over the last five decades, it's been said, the best way to give raises, the most fair ways, is everybody gets the same raise, okay? The returns. Let's look what would happen. For the board members, the first one says after one year, notice that the salary schedule wouldn't change, but you would get a 2% raise because you would get a step. What would happen to the superintendent's pay? It would increase by 2%. How about the senior management? $100,000 would go to $102,000. That's fair, isn't it? There's nothing wrong with that. Well, how about, let's look at five years. After five years, every year, you would get a 2% raise, and you would count up the steps, the cost of the steps, and then you'd say, "Well, it would appear in the paper that you got a 2% raise, and it costs $4,500." Okay. What would happen to the superintendent's pay? It would go up to $287,000, and the senior management would go to $110,000. Well, let's skip out. Let's go out there 50 years. You could be given a step raise every year for 50 years, and you would have the same salary schedule. And guess what? If you had the same number of board members, you would have the same cost. Step raise cost is science fiction, okay? Do you understand that? But what would happen to the superintendent's pay or senior management pay? They would increase drastically, okay? And it shows it down there that the superintendent's pay would go up to $316,000. Well, no, excuse me, $699,000. And that $100,000 senior management position would go up to $229,000. You think that's the same? You understand how it works? You can do the same thing for teachers. You can give teachers a-
Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Okay. I'll finish doing this next time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chandler. We have Tiffany Locke. Tiffany Locke is up. And then we have Glenda White on deck. Glenda White is on deck.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tiffany Locke. I'm a mom to three Polk County Public School kids. I have a high schooler, George Shinkins, and a second grader and a kindergarten at Scott Lake Elementary. And I'm here to advocate for my kindergarten who has an IEP in speech. There's a speech crisis going on in this county. Crisis is not an understatement. She and my daughter has been seen two and a half, two and a half hours this entire school year. Two and a half hours. I first contacted my school after receiving a speech progress report for my child after the first nine weeks, when she was only seen one time, stating that she was progressing. I contacted the school, and I was like, "Hey, can you explain to me how, after one time seeing the speech person, that she's progressing?" And they got me to the speech person, Ms. Lesnick, who was there at the time, who's no longer there. And I was told that it was something that had to be completed so that she could continue getting her services. So Ms. Lesnick then referred me to her boss. And that was Maggie Reynolds, ESE Director of Compliance. Maggie Reynolds has quite frankly failed my child in so many ways possible. She's, at some point, has stopped returning my email, and I had to go back to my principal and say, "Hey, she stopped responding. Who do I talk to before coming to, like, before doing this, okay? What's the proper steps?" And she got me to Rebecca Ekman. And Rebecca Ekman said, "Hey, we're going into winter break." And a whole another nine weeks had gone by, and she had only been seen a certain amount of time. But she got me to Rebecca Ekman. Rebecca Ekman said, "Hey, we're having a meeting at the end of Christmas break. I will get back to you, or I will have somebody get back to you." So Maggie Reynolds got back to me. We created a plan for her compensatory speech. And she is supposed to receive nine hours of compensatory speech. I have the contract here. If you'd like to take a look at it, stating that she's only received two and a half hours and that she is due nine hours. Signing that contract, so you say, she did not have a contract with the person that she signed it with. It still is not, as of yesterday, speaking to the person, it is not finalized. And there's other kids at the school. So my question to you is, if Polk County says that students are first, why are students that need it the most are being left behind?
Superintendent, do we have staff here that can address that?
We have several regional assistant superintendents in the back. They'll be there in the hallway.
Okay. Thank you for being here, Locke. All right, Glenda White, you are up. And then on deck, we have Octavio Hernandez.
Hello again. I'm Glenda White from Winter Haven. I want to congratulate the school board on the recent news that we've now gone from a graduation rate of about 80% to about 83%. However, with improvements being made, we still have 17% of our kids not graduating. And of those who do, how many will have to take basic courses before they can enter the higher learning curriculum required for bachelor's degree? Our children should be graduating at a rate of 98% and fully prepared to enter college or skills education as they choose. Our current school budget is $2.5 billion, but we are finally learning the hard lesson that money is not the answer. There is no excuse for failing our children. The fact has been for decades, is currently the fact, and will continue to be the fact for years to come, that even if we perform perfectly from this day forward, Polk Schools and schools across Florida and the U.S. will be failing our kids for years to come. We spend multiple billions on our efforts with little effect. The education of our kids has become totally politicized, and our education system ruined by Marxists. The education system of U.S. children since the inception of the Department of Education by Jimmy Carter in 1976 and infiltration of Marxism nationwide has fallen from the best system in the world to one of the worst education systems on the planet. I don't fault the teachers, support staff, or administrators who love kids and are trying to just do their job. But I do fault those who have made a career of politicizing educating kids with their political agendas. Tax-paying citizens must endure and fight their tactics constantly. Trust in our school system has seriously decreased. I want all parents who hear this message to know that there is a way out of this system. The Governor of Florida has provided an opportunity for parents who are trapped or feel trapped and are concerned about the education of their children. Parents are now able to apply for and receive educational scholarships to place their children in private, home, and microschools that match their own value system. They don't have to worry about their children being indoctrinated by woke school policy and activist teachers. The link to these applications is located on the Polk School website. I personally feel the entire state should go full school choice. And even if the parent chooses to leave their child in public school, they must fill out an application paperwork each year to place their child. Thank you. I want to also say that my youngest daughter is dyslexic. Every year, we faithfully came to Polk Schools and filled out an IEP.
Thank you, Ms. White. Thank you for being here. Octavia Hernandez, you're up. And then we have Mary Beth Salisbury. That would be on deck.
Good evening, school board. My name is Octavia Hernandez. I'm a teacher at Haynes City High School. I'm an algebra teacher. I'm also a soccer coach there. I'm here to speak on behalf of my students. Right now, currently, our lunchtime is 25 minutes for, only two lunches, for over 3,000 students. Now, you're a graduate of Haynes City High School, and now you represent that area. And I hope that the $11 million that we're going to save on the portables can be implemented in a, perhaps, a new cafeteria. Ms. Fields, you were talking about how cold that day was, at 40 degrees. Now imagine having 3,000 students and trying to feed them, because they're not allowed to be in the cafeteria unless they have food. So they have to be outside in that cold, in that 40-degree weather. Now, I know a lot of people don't come out here to speak because it takes an hour to get out here, but I'm here on behalf of my students. Because it's not fair that they have to sit there 25 minutes and decide, "Well, I'm going to have lunch, or I'm going to spend time with my friends." We talk about this new generation that doesn't get a chance to socialize. Well, how are they going to get a chance to socialize if we keep teaching bell-to-bell? We don't give them an opportunity to grow and be independent and have friends. And I believe that we can do this on our next contract. 30-minute lunches should be mandatory. How dare you guys expect these teachers to just have a 22-minute lunch, a 23-minute lunch? Come on. Prisoners have longer lunches than our teachers and our students? This is something that we can fix easily and mandate it across the county, that every principal find a way. I'm not going to blame my administration, because they're good people and they work with our teachers. But somebody's got to say something. 3,000 students in 50 minutes? You telling me that's possible? I would love for you to go out there and represent your high school where you graduated from, sir. Ms. Miller, I am so glad that you know Mr. from Citrus Connections.
If you can just address your comments to me, that would be appreciated.
Well, no, I'm just glad, because I just heard it right now, tonight. It was great, because I came here on behalf, as a coach, you know. It was a great, because I came here on behalf, as a coach, you know, a lot of, we don't fill our students our, our sports, because these kids don't have public transportation. And I'm glad that somebody in the school board member has a correct contact with the Citrus Connect, so maybe they can have routes after school, starting at three o'clock, smaller routes around the community, place, uh, bus stops in front of our high school, so our students have a way to, uh, join these programs, to join after-school programs, because it gets them out of trouble. To join sports, because it has been proven that it helps students that are in sports, that are in after-school tutoring, they can't, they can't get there, because they can't have someone pick them up. That community is low-income, and it's difficult, most of the parents have two jobs, so it's hard for them to come out here and speak, it's hard for them to come out here and get what's needed, and that's what I'm here for. So I hopefully, hopefully believe that you guys do represent the students in the community, and you actually do care, do something, that's not expensive, to actually just pass that. And I'm glad that we finally decided to have a, uh, as a teacher, that we're gonna meet on February fifth for our contract, and for all my teachers out there, union or not, it's time to work our contract bell-to-bell, until we get a new contract, because it's hard to live out there, under where we live in. Every teacher that I know has a second job, I have to have an extra planning period just to make ends meet. And for those people that think that getting rid of the, of government, uh, funding for education, guess what? Title I money comes from federal government, that's money that goes to our schools and our communities. We gotta be prepared for that to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Octavia. Uh, Mary Beth Salisbury, you are next.
Hello, my name is Mary Beth Salisbury, and I live in Lake Wales. I have, uh, two grandchildren in the Spessard Elementary School. I have two things that I wanted to bring to your attention, because my thing is, if you don't know about them, then you don't know that you may have a potential issue. One is that, uh, Mr. Cobble, who I talked to multiple times right before the Christmas holiday, or the, uh, winter holiday, um, spoke with me in regards to the volunteer program. I know in night, in, uh, twenty-twenty-three, a law was passed by the state that additional, um, background checks had to be done on volunteers. We got an email, and that told us that day, we were no longer allowed to go into the schools, that we were no, um, no longer able to help in a classroom do any tutoring, help with fundraising, anything else, until that was worked out. Uh, I guess ACHA is the organization that you have to work through now. I have recently found out, um, Mr. Sharpless, that, um, the, uh, FFA and the 4H that are in the youth fair have to do that same thing. It costs, uh, just under a hundred dollars to be screened now to be a volunteer. That is not your issue, and I understand that, because it's a state law. However, I do believe that as a group, between the school boards, the superintendents, whatever, you could work with other youth organizations that also have to do that, so that, for instance, I would not have to do it for 4H, and then again, have to be screened to work into your school system. So it would cost me almost two hundred dollars to volunteer for those two. I think that's my first issue I'd like you to be aware of, and I think there's power in numbers.
I feel like we should clarify-
Okay.
You did not receive the letters that told you-
Volunteers were to cease and desist. What we said was, we were no longer accepting any additional applications at the time, because that was the directives that we had received, that come March, we would roll into a new requirement with the state. We have subsequently sent out a, a new email, telling you that there are multiple options for volunteers, including classroom visitors, a, we still retain a Level One volunteer, and we have a Level Two volunteer. Level Two volunteers require that you must have that entire background check, if there's ever a possibility that you will be alone with a student outside of the direct observation of a Polk County Public School employee. You also will not have to pay multiple times, because that's the point behind the state moving to this database system that will allow us to ensure that you can mult, you could volunteer in multiple agencies or in multiple areas. Once you've paid once and been approved, it will ensure that you don't have to do that again for a minimum of five years, unless you have a criminal violation. So much of this was discussed earlier in the workshop as well, um, but this has been communicated with, with all of our volunteers, it's also been communicated with our school-based administrators. So I just want to make sure I clarified for the record, because there's, there's some things you stated today that just were not truly factual, so thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I, I thank you for clarifying that, because I did receive both of those emails, and so I did not understand that from the, uh, email, so I apologize, but I did want you to know that Mr. Cobble had been very communicative with me and working with that. The other thing is, um, I, I noticed that you're looking at the Point Sienna High School. Pickup times, because of the number of people who pick up their students, are zoo. So I would suggest very strongly that you work with the land development code, and you work with the site development, so that that is considered, because that's not gonna go away. As you said, there are so many people moving into the community, and I just think that, uh, what Spessard Elementary and Dr. Golden are trying to do to work out their issues and to make it done in a timely manner are amazing. Um, it, it's not timely, and it's not easy, and I do worry about, um, everybody in the staff that's having to be out there, uh, between cars and trying to load them up and get them moving. And so, uh, it's a zoo, and, uh, she's working on it, and she also is doing an excellent job, and I thank you, Superintendent, for giving me that other information. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Salisbury. All right, board members, the next order of business at this point is adjournment. Uh, any other business that you'd like to bring before the board? If not, this meeting is now adjourned.